Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to start the meeting of Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. Board of Trustees, regular session, I'm sorry, the closed session. First item, roll call. Madam Secretary, could we please call the roll?
Virginia Baxter. Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto. And Sunny Zia.
Here.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Trustee Baxter is out of town and will not be here. Trustee Otto is in route, but we're going to move forward for the sake of time. The first item on 1.3 is the public comments on closed session items. A total of three minutes will be allocated to each speaker with a maximum of 20 minutes. We have three speakers in the order they were given. Dave Gale, Kristen Marino, and Diana Ogimachi. Did I come close? Did I do very well? Good enough? Thank you. Those three speakers, if they come to the podium, please. I'm going to read the items, even though 1.3 is public comments. Let me go over the items that are before closed session at this time. 1.4, AFT negotiating items pursuant to government code. 3549, 1.1, and 5495, 7.6, District Chief Negotiator Reagan Romelli. Next one, 1.5, LBCCFA negotiation items pursuant to government code. Same. Chief Negotiator Jean Duran. 1.6, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code. Each is assigned, Representative Dr. Reagan Romelli, unrepresented employee management. Those are the items before the closed session. At this time, public comment. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Romali and members of the board. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the position that lecture and lab should be equally compensated. To do so, I will discuss three items. One is that lab is indispensable to learning, of course. It is an extension of lecture, and it is very time consuming. So I begin first with the labor of lab. So let me just give an example of what happens to do when I have to put together a lab exam. First is prep time. That may take one to three hours. During this time, I'm either putting out microscopes on a table, maybe 30 scopes out in one session. They're heavy. I have to load them with slides and find the right image on the slide for students to find it. I may be involved in labeling models for muscles. I may be involved in making my cadaver presentable for students to find muscles during the exam, as well as for cats as well. So we have cats and cadaver, wet specimens that require some really ahead of time preparation. So it can be useful and it can be efficient when they get through it. But once I'm all set up then, I have to then put placements, tags at each station so to know what I want from them. So we bring them in, then I must supervise them, because otherwise students act silly when I supervise. Then, once it's done, I must do it again, because usually I'm over enrolled, so I must do everything twice, otherwise it's not done in a good way. So we do all of this efficiently, then at the end of the process, I must grade the exam. Grading is a graded handwritten exam. So there's an issue of handwriting and an issue of spelling. So those two factors really delay how quickly I can grade the exam. So it's a labor of love. We do it because we know that lab is indispensable. Lab is important. Students do not learn well in the lecture format. So they require lab, hands-on experience. They require some kind of, you know, non-book idea or book approach so they can reinforce what we just discussed in lecture. And I think it prepares them for their careers in various medical field where they will have to do some kind of practice of some lab experience in their work. So we prepare them for their future careers. All right? So we think that paying us on parity with lecture reinforces that you also value lab and think lab is indispensable to the process of learning. And it also encourages us to be innovative. For example, in my department, we use cadavers. Cadavers are really not used regularly at this level of colleges. But we bring it in each year because students like it, and if they like it, they get interested in it, they learn it better. We also make cadavers available for science night every year. So it's really, it's almost like a recruiting tool for the college to bring students in and keep them here because they like what we have to give them. And so, in closing, I'll say this, that we, as faculty, are in partnership with the administration in our joint goal to educate our students. And so, when you pay us appropriately for our labor, it suggests that you also value what we contribute to the joint partnership. Thank you.
Next speaker, and by the way, and I apologize, we normally have this big clock behind us that counts down to your destruction or whatever. And so, when we really, if you hit three minutes, you're going to watch me do something like this. I was just telling you, but just FYI, I'm not trying to gather your attention, but the heat must have taken care of our timer. So anyway, your name for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Marino. Good afternoon, President Romali and board members. As you are aware, LBCCFA is currently in negotiations with the district. I am speaking as our FA co-chief negotiator and in support of our faculty's request for a meaningful salary increase. Based on many conversations, I believe there is a partnership between the district's goals and the faculty's crucial participation in achieving these goals. Our strategic plan clearly outlines how the college plans to improve and build equitable student success, support innovation, and forge educational and business community partnerships. Goal four of our strategic plan also speaks to the need to, quote, "attract, support, and retain a diverse and exemplary workforce, and invest in people and support structures for transformation." Faculty are this exemplary workforce. We share the college's commitment to providing our students with quality instruction and opportunities to succeed. We practice enrollment management, innovation, professional excellence, and dedication with our students each day. I am reminded of our faculty who are leading course acceleration best practices, lab faculty who arrive hours early to set up materials for students, department heads who work well past nine to five to complete their work and implement various programs and college initiatives. And on a personal note, I am reminded of my own students' successes, including a recent online student, a veteran who needed extra support to complete my English class as he returned to active duty. Faculty share stories like these with each other all the time. And while there are too many stories to share here, I hope that you will recognize our work and invest in us as we support the strategic plan and, most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Welcome. Hello, everybody, on this hot Arizona-like day. So, good afternoon, Board President Jeff Kellogg, Superintendent President Dr. Romali, members of the board, students, and Long Beach City College colleagues. My name is Diana Ogimachi, and I am a counselor, as well as I hold the position of Secretary for the Faculty Association here at Long Beach City College. I also have the honor of serving the college for 36 years. I can say faculty love nothing more than to have a student come in and tell us, "I'm transferring to Cal State Long Beach," or "I got accepted to UC Irvine," or that "I got a job with Cisco," or "I'm working at Memorial Hospital." We feel this because we feel a student's success is our success. So we sent, FA sent a letter to all board members and Dr. Romali identifying some of the achievements of our students' successes, and I hope you read it. I'm speaking to you today to urge the district to come to an agreement with FA on a contract settlement. Our department heads have increased workloads in trying to meet the greater demands of college initiatives, elevated hiring, and evaluating a full and part-time faculty, serving as an ombuds person for students and others, as well as developing new programs, just to name a few of their duties. So increasing their compensation in the matter of release, reassigned time is necessary. As mentioned by our previous speaker, we ask to bring parity to our fellow faculty who teach lab classes. Presently, these faculty are paid .75 lecture hours, or essentially three-quarters time, for teaching these classes, although the college receives full funding for the classes they teach, whether it's a lab or a lecture class. Lastly, I encourage the district to bring a meaningful salary increase to the faculty so that we are in alignment with our neighboring comparable colleges as identified in the master agreement, so that we can retain and attract the best faculty. My understanding is that the district has settled with CHAI and has come to a tentative agreement with AFT. I want to urge the district to settle with FA so then we can all concentrate on our greatest challenge presently at the college, which is to increase our enrollment. We all want Long Beach City College to be the community college of choice, the first college students think about when deciding where to attend. So I'd like to say, let's come together, let's get something settled, so that we can all work toward our mutual goal of student success. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. There are no other speakers at this time, so I will ask that we adjourn to closed session. We are planning on reconvening at 5:00. At this time, the closed session, this is now adjourned to closed session. Good evening. Our apologies for being a little bit tardy out of the closed session. This is the meeting of the Long Beach Community College Board of Trustees meeting for October 24th, 2017. On a day that triple-digit weather, hopefully it reminds everybody of fall, Southern California version. We are reconvening to open session at this time. I would like to call the order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Vice President Emery Gabel to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Gabel. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Virginia Baxter. Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto. And Sunny Zia.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Baxter will not be attending. She is out of town. Report on closed session items. There is nothing to report out on closed session items. 2.5, approval of minutes to September 12th, 2017, regular Board of Trustee meeting. I entertain a motion due to.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Otto. Question, comments on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, vote on item 2.5.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 2.6, introduction, special announcements. Superintendent President, you have something you would like to announce.
Yes, sir. We'd like to announce the retirement of Edward Lang, who is the lead custodian in our classified personnel ranks. He proudly served the institution for 12 years, and we want to thank him for his service, although he's not able to join us tonight. He was a custodian from 2005 until 2011, where he was promoted to lead custodian and retired at the end of September. Thank you so much, Edward, for your service.
That is all at this time? Very good. I reminded my colleagues, we are aware that there is a World Series taking place. But for people that remember back in the days when you would have your transistor radio in a classroom, or did I just completely date myself on that one? But nonetheless, go Dodgers. The next item is the reordering of the agenda. I heard no items from members of colleagues, so we can move forward. If, no objection. 2.8, ASB President Report. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, trustees, faculty, staff, and members of the public. There's quite a few things to report for the meeting today. First off, on behalf of the ASB, we'd like to thank all the trustees who, for their involvement in coming by and supporting us for our meeting so far this semester. This week, Sunny Zia actually stopped by and spoke to us about some of the projects she was working on, and it was actually really refreshing just to see another trustee come by, so thank you very much.
Pleasure.
Next off, I'm very excited for our meeting greet this Friday. It's going to take place right before our ASB meeting, so it's going to be from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. at 22112. So it's going to be really fun, really happy to see, hopefully, everybody there. So it's going to be really fun, yeah. Next, something to report that happened last week was last Tuesday, October 18th, our Rep. of Student Services, Jocelyn Reyes. Her, along with the help from various ASB cabinet members and club and organization student leaders, orchestrated a DACA walk. It was well-attended, and there were actually like a lot of cars honking when we were going along the side of Carson, so it was good to see pretty much everyone out. I think there were like around 40, 30 to 40 students who came by, so really good. Next up is upcoming events. So, next event that's going to be happening is the LAC Homecoming Rally. It's going to be taking place this Thursday, October 26th, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. here at the E Quad area. It's pretty much right behind the A Building. So if any of you are free, members of the public, please stop by. It's going to be pretty fun. You'll see a whole bunch of student leaders there. The LBCC dance team will be there, as well as student athletes from the football team. There's going to be root beer chugging competitions and a whole bunch more, so keep a lookout. And if any of you guys want to participate, you know, it's open for you guys. Next up is the PCC Carnival, going to be taking place Friday, October 27th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So right after our ASB cabinet meeting, we're actually going to be helping set up and with the booths and pretty much getting everything ready. There will also be a, what do you call it, a, hmm, not a booth, it's a, poor hell, can you help me out? What was it?
For what?
Where they scare you?
Oh, like a haunted house?
Yeah, haunted house, yeah.
There you go.
It's, yeah, so there's going to be a haunted house going through the student union. I haven't gone to one in like forever, so sorry about that. But by all means, please stop by. It was really good to see the trustees help out for Welcome Week, so if any of you guys are available, feel free, you don't have to, but it's always good to see you guys there. And finally, the Homecoming Tailgate and the Homecoming Game are going to be happening this Saturday. Tailgate starts at 3:00, it's going to end at around 6:00, 5:30 to 6:00, right before the game starts. You'll see all the clubs and organizations there. There'll be a haunted house there as well. Once again, hot dogs, come by, it's going to be fun, and let's get that win. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Next item is the 2.9. These are public comments on agenda items. A total of three minutes will be allocated for each speaker. We have one speaker card. Correct, Madam Secretary? It is Thomas Hamilton on item 6.3. Do we have a timer running now?
We do have a timer now.
All right. Very good. You're starting to fill in that suit again. That's good to see.
Thanks. Good evening, President Kellogg, President Romali, Board of Trustees, members of the staff, classified and the general public. My name is Thomas Hamilton, the AFT president as far as the classified employees here at the college. And I want to speak that we just had our, oh, the clock's on, it's been a while since I've been up here. Did you turn that on? Turn it off. Anyway, we just had our release time meeting as far as the goal of our tentative agreement as far as like with the district. I want to thank President Romali, President Kellogg, as far as participation in this and the board. I know that this is on a agenda item. We just ratified it as far as with our rank and file, as far as with a vote of 214 to four, as far as with approval of the TA agreement that we had as far as like with the district. And I am asking that the Board of Trustees, as far as go with this, and I noticed a general item as far as for the evening, and approve the TA that we have with the district, and so that we can move forward on and get ready for our holidays. I want to thank all those that's been involved in this, as far as the participation, and especially the negotiation team that's been working diligently hard on this while I've been on my little medical leave and what have you. So I want to say appreciation and thanks to all those that's been involved, and hopefully we get this ratified and approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. There's no other members of the public, so we're moving to 3.1. This is the public hearing for the board appointment to the Personnel Commission. At this time, we do have, Madam Secretary, a speaker who wishes to comment. This is the time set aside for the public to express its views on the board appointment to the Personnel Commission. I now declare this public hearing open, for lack of a better term. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the Board of Trustees at this time on the appointment? Welcome, Janine.
Good evening. I'm Janine McManigle Ball. I've been on the Personnel Commission for 11 years. I know most of you, and those of you who I don't, I hope I get to meet you soon. I've had the extraordinary pleasure to work alongside Dick Gaylord for the last 11 years, and if you know Dick, the word extraordinary is not overused. His leadership skills are unparalleled. He has an ability to negotiate with opposing viewpoints that has skill and poise on a regular basis. He's been able to create a bridge to our classified staff and our union that hasn't happened in years, and it's been such a joy to watch and such a pleasure to see that bond created. And I really lay that at his feet because he has worked so diligently to create that, and I am so grateful to him, and I'm sure the classified staff can say the same thing. He has the respect of every single position on this campus, whether it be administrative or whatever our bottom position is on campus, I can't even tell you what that is, our students, our local community. He recognizes that every component is completely valued and brings every single person to the table. He is transparent in everything he does, and he always works for a primary goal of serving this college. That is so important, and I've seen that on occasion not come through with other people, but Dick always has that goal in mind. Whatever the college's best interest is, is what his best interest is. We're extremely fortunate to have him in the service of LBCC, and I just want to say that I wholeheartedly and gratefully support his reappointment. Please do that tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No other speakers at this time on this item. Then I would like to, I will read into the record, and then I'll open for, I'll ask for a motion, and then a discussion. So it is recommended that the Board of Trustees hold a public hearing on the nomination of Richard F. Gaylord as the board's appointment to the district's Personnel Commission for a three-year term effective noon December 4, 2017.
So moved.
And ending noon, I'm sorry, ending noon December 1st, 2020. In accordance with educational accord, the board announced its intent to reappoint Richard F. Gaylord to the district Personnel Commission on September 12th, 2017. Also in accordance with the aforementioned Code section, the board shall hold a public meeting today to provide the public employees and employee organizations the opportunity to express their views on the qualification of the individuals as appointed. This is per the educational accord, so at this time, I could entertain a motion for the nomination.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Otto, second by Trustee Zia. Discussion comments from members of the board at this time?
I just want to just echo.
Chair recognizes Trustee Zia. Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to reiterate my comments. The last session, I think we're very lucky to have you, Dick. You've served so well. I've heard great things from, as Janine was mentioning, from all constituent groups, and that says a lot about your character. So, lucky to have you. Thank you for your service, and looking forward to many more years.
Other members at this time? Chair recognizes Trustee Otto.
Yeah. Dick, I want to echo what's been said. You've been working for Long Beach City College for a very, very long time. You've done it with dignity, with perspective, with 100% dedication to what's in the best interest of the college. It's the kind of leadership that this college needs, and I'm very personally grateful for all that you've done and the wisdom that you've brought to the Personnel Commission, which is a very difficult assignment.
I will make comment to. Chair recognizes Trustee Malauulu.
Ever mindful of the World Series game, I want to echo what my colleagues have said. Congratulations and thank you.
No score, by the way. I do want to say, though, I actually, oh, there is a score. You do have the transistor radio going, don't you? Why don't we just put it up on the screen and make it a lot more interesting? So.
I second that, Kellogg.
Yeah. I would do want to, though, I met Dick Gaylord actually in 1987, to where he looked at me and goes, "You seriously? Are you young? You can't even vote? How can you run for public office?" And from there, though, probably one of the closest individuals to my family outside of being an actual family member, and we treat Doug as a family member. His involvement in this community is second to none. He's been involved in organizations with the California Board and the National Board of Realtors. His service to this community, to this college, has been phenomenal, but most importantly, when you get through everything else, as a personal, as a friend, there is really no one I would ever look for to, for guidance and help than Dick Gaylord. And the point I always tell people, and it's not meant in any other way except, is that whenever you have, we have funerals and nobody wants to give eulogies on your family members, my entire family, the one person we asked to give the eulogies for both my mother and my father, because it was too difficult for all of us, was Dick Gaylord. And I always say, if that doesn't say something about the quality of individual, nothing else will. So I'm very proud of the fact, all that aside from a personal standpoint, you have a quality individual who looks out of the best interest of this college and doing the right things. And so are very, obviously, very supportive of this as well. If there's no other comments on that, Madam Secretary, the roll, please.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Dick. I don't think there's, we said if you want to make any comments, but congratulations to you. Thank you. Moving on, top of the second, it's 3.3, revised policy, 2028 regular.
I'm sorry, did you give the score at the top of the second?
Yeah, I know. Vice President Gabel is keeping abreast of that, I'm assuming. So, 3.3, revised board policy, 2028 regular meeting of the board? Is that a typo?
Board policy 2028.
Policy, that is the name of the policy.
Okay.
And if you look at the.
Okay, the name of the policy. All right.
Year 2028.
So, good. I want to make sure.
First reading.
First pitch, first hitter, hit it out.
And my apologies, I literally walked over. Student trustee had the opportunity to vote on that item on the Personnel Commissioner. You actually had, so at this time, student trustee, your vote on that item, please.
First reading.
Aye. They were the notes I was given, that they were able to do that. All right.
And I even made you notes.
I'm sorry?
Last time it was the wedding, and now I made you notes this time.
Yes, you did. Thank you. All right. So that is item 3.2. We're now to 3.3, revised board policy, 2028 regular board meeting. I'm going to read, as I've been moving things around here, and I'm taking over, Vice President Trustee Zia. trustee Zia's spot. This item, I can just read this in the record, and the policy of the Long Beach Community College District to hold its regular board meetings. Do I have to read all of this?
The last paragraph.
The last paragraph, thank you. "Due to the district's support of participatory governance, the academic and classified senate presidents shall be seated at the board table." This is per policy regulations, ed code, et cetera. That is the motion on the floor. If I could entertain a motion-
It's a first reading, there's no motion.
First reading. No board required. Any comments, members of the board at this time, on first reading on this item? Hearing done. Very good. Move on to item 3.4, resolution. Consolidation of future board elections and the statewide general election date pursuant to Election Code Section. Student trustee, you will be able to vote on this as well. This is the, a resolution, consolidation of future board elections, the statewide general election date pursuant to Election Code Section 13002B, as submitted. I will turn this, let me ask for a motion in a second because this is an action item, and then I'm going to refer to Vice President Zia, because she was dealing with this on as an ad hoc basis. So entertain a motion a second on this. Motion by trustee Malauulu, seconded by trustee Zia. Discussion, members of the board. Chair recognizes Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I don't have a lot of explanation on this other than the committee met, and it is our recommendation to proceed with the year that is before you, November 2020. And we figured going with the 2018 date will not give us enough time to roll out and be able to sync up with the city and the county. So, the 2020 date was the, is the recommendation that we bring before the board. 2022, the reason we didn't go with the 2022 year was because it would be more savings for the district if we go at the 2020 timeline. And based on that, I believe the city is also trying to align with us to consolidate and save money and funding expenditures on this account. Trustee Malauulu, would you like to add anything else as the other member of the committee?
No, I would just like to say thank you to trustee Zia and to Miles and to Superintendent President Romali for the work that was done behind the scenes with the research, and also that we did explore other options to save the district money, but to also remain consistent and in compliance with what the city and the state requirements were, and I think the county elections also, if I'm not mistaken. So, the decision works for everybody and, you know, it's just something we have to do, it's just something we have to go with. It's not, you know, it's not something we might want to do or have chosen to do, but it's something that we have to do, and we decided on the best avenue to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members at this time? Trustee Otto, did you have any comments on this item?
No.
No? I would just, as was mentioned, this item is a, I have great difficulty with it. I think it's a case of where Sacramento comes and tries to get involved. The consensus of this was to try to increase voter participation in local elections. They then, they, meaning whatever, it's really, it's from Sacramento, it was driven down into local areas such as the city of Long Beach, Community College District. The city has taken a, has done a resolution that they are going to be moving their election from what it traditionally has been in April with runoffs in June, I think that's what it is.
City of Long Beach will be doing June and November.
But previously, previously-
Previously, yes, April and June.
April and June. They would have a, and the point was that in April, the only election really there is your local elections, and then June you start to see party primaries come into play, but that's our runoff. Now the way it's set up and the intent, again, voter participation, was that to move it where it's aligned with the other elections, what we're doing now is we are moving it to, so our elections will be now in November.
Yes.
We do not have a runoff, that's the reason. We only have November.
So we will be in November. So our elections will take place for Community College Board of Trustees in the November with the presidential election, so on. The reason I bring that up, and as trustee Malauulu said, it really wasn't giving us an option, because if it was an option, the city of Long Beach actually addressed this issue years ago, where they tried, they was in effort to consolidate with the same intent voter participation. The argument, and I was on the, at that time we were successful on a local ballot, to not move it simply because a local election without the other issues there, it focuses on the local election. It gave the issues, they're really, they're an uncluttered viewpoint. I'm going to tell you that November, your mailboxes will be filled with lots of things, so make sure you look for also a trustee mailer among the multitude of propositions, presidential elections, senatorial, et cetera, et cetera. So I really am disappointed that we were forced to do this and we're moving it. It is just to me, and mind-boggling, and by the way, the state of California is now moving their election back towards where it's an early election to be a participant in the presidential politics. So, that was my whole point about these moving targets, but nonetheless, we are now set for, the election will take place in November of 2020 for our elections in line with other ones as well. And if you don't think this thing is really, to me, completely messed up, then in the past where I mentioned you have an election locally, within 60 days you have a runoff, and therefore for city council, you have people that within 60 days are then, have their election. Now with this great wisdom, they are going to have city elections in June, and then July, August, September, October, November, five months later, they're going to come to a citywide election. So, we love politics and now we just get to a lot more of it. So I just have always said, this is where Sacramento sometimes comes up with some really bad ideas, and this was one, but they made the mandate on us and we've got it, and we are voting on it tonight, but I'm doing this with the infamous, it just to me is wrong and we didn't want to do this, but we don't have a lot of choices. So with that-
President Kellogg.
Yes, Vice President Zia. And nice work on putting all this, all this stuff together, because it's, can be confusing.
While we are being forced to do this, the California Voter Participation Act, there is a silver lining for us and for our students, that we will be saving about a little over $300,000 a year by this change in consolidating our elections. So I just wanted to add that minor enhancement that is going to really help our students and save expenditures for what it's worth.
Yeah. Anyway, look for those mailers in your November mailbox for the city of, city council.
Democracy is messy, President Kellogg.
No other discussion at this time. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on this item.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee, your vote please, advisory.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next time to presentations, 4.1, faculty and staff diversity report. My appreciation, this was originally on the agenda to be scheduled two meetings ago. So we are now here. Superintendent President, would you like to start?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gene Durant, who is our associate by Vice President of Human Resources, and he's going to give you an update on faculty and staff ethnic diversity hiring.
Welcome, Gene. This is an informational item only to-
Yeah. Could I also take a moment to introduce our new classified executive director of the Classified Human Resources, Kristin Olson. She just started last week and she'll also be a part of the presentation, so thank you both.
You're welcome.
For President Kellogg, Superintendent President Romali, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity and to colleague everyone else who's here in the room.
Gene, pull that microphone right to you.
Yeah. Put it up a little bit.
Real close, talk right into it.
How's that? The one thing we wanted to share before we start, certainly we appreciate the opportunities to do this. One thing that's important to remember is, when it comes to faculty and staff ethnic diversity, when it comes to equity and all those considerations, this isn't a once and done for us. This is something we talk about, look into, research and consider every day that we're here. It's really important and we understand that. So I just wanted to share that we've done a lot of looking at this report, some research. We've looked into disparity, some of the, some of the groups where there's maybe been a little bit of a different impact, and we've done some research. So at the end of this, we're going to come to you with some of our strategies, how we've looked at this, and how we even hope to improve the results that we've gotten so far. I'll let Kristin start.
Good evening, board members. As I was introduced, I'm Kristin Olson. I am the new executive director of Classified Human Resources. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present on this material. I've looked it over for the last week, so I haven't had too much exposure to it, but I will do the best that I can in presenting this material. So if you look to slide one, what I'd like to call your attention to is the last column for 2016-17. And if you look at that, you can see that we hired at the rate of 16% for Black African-American candidates, at the rate of 29% for Hispanic, Latino, Latina candidates, 11% for Asian, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, and 44% for white candidates. We did have an area of improvement for hiring the Black African-American candidates, up from 12% from last year. However, the other areas did dip down slightly, and that is something that we are going to address, and that is something that we analyzed. And I will talk about strategies to address this in the last slide in the presentation. I think my microphone went off. So now, in reviewing this slide, I'd like to turn it back over to Gene, who will walk you through the next few slides.
The next slide representing is, I don't even know, are we on? Is management recruitment, and this includes both classified and academic recruitment. If you'll look at the bottom, the total ethnic diversity, we are staying somewhat consistent, though there was a little bit of a dip. The one thing about this category though, it is a lowered number of hires, so all it takes is a couple individuals in one category or another to change the percentage. When we look at part-time faculty recruitment, the trend is really quite good. For 16-17, diversity hiring was at about 49%. It's gone anywhere from 43, 44, 39, and now we're at 49%. One thing, why we're encouraged about this, obviously as we know, is we look at the part-time faculty pool as a great resource for us when we go out for full-time faculty recruitment. We've had great success there. Here you look at full-time faculty recruitment. As you can see, I just wanted to point out, for 16-17, the diversity percentage for full-time faculty was 18%. What we attribute that to is, at that time, there was a decision to actually increase the time that we had the postings open, to extend them a little bit in an effort to capture more diverse candidates. And honestly, I, that actually did not have the intended result. So for 17-18, what we did is we were very aggressive. We spoke to all the stakeholders who are involved in the hiring, faculty administrators and everyone. We made a concerted effort to get out early, to get out before the competition, to ensure that we were the ones who had the options of interviewing the broadest candidates, the most diverse candidates, and those who were first in the market. And as you can see, even though it's a little bit of a sneak peek, for 17-18, we were able to increase and improve faculty diversity hiring up to 58%.
Thank you. So if you look, turn your attention to this slide as well, you'll be able to see from 2016-17 from last year, overall, the diversity did go down with the exception of the Black or African-American candidate pool again, which slightly increased. And in turning to the next slide, you'll be able to see, oh, I went the wrong way, sorry about that. Too far. There we go. In this slide, the overall diversity did decrease for management as well, with the exception of Hispanic, Latino, which did increase slightly. And again, the strategies for addressing all of this will be addressed within the last slide.
So let's look at some of the demographic, management, here's the management numbers. You can see across the board, which Kristin talked about. Part-time faculty, again, you can see the trend is definitely going up, which we're happy about. Full-time faculty, percentage point increase for fall 17, going in the right direction. And here's the current ethnic diversity percentages for all the groups together, just for the sake of comparison. And we'll talk about some of the strategy.
And I spent some time thinking about this because I know this is a high priority for the college, so I do have quite a few bullet points on here, and I'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. If you look to the first one, reduce the number of questions per exam and timeframe per exam. When we look at the multiple choice test, one thing that we want to do is make sure that we're testing to the knowledge of the position and we are not testing the ability to take a test. We want to make sure that the test is representative in terms of length and in terms of times of questions asked. So one strategy that we are going to use is reducing the number of questions and also reducing the number of multiple choice tests, if that's a possibility, exploring other options in terms of test materials. That takes me down to the next one, inform applicants of subject matter areas on the exam. Again, we want to make sure to reduce test anxiety, so that isn't an error that factors into the overall test-taking strategy. Rather, again, we are testing job knowledge. So by letting applicants know what areas they will be tested on ahead of time, that will be able to focus them in terms of knowing what they need to look at ahead of time and what areas to expect on the actual test. Implement online testing with practice pre-test sessions. Again, what we want to do is make sure that applicants have exposure to tests beforehand. We want to reduce testing anxiety whenever possible, otherwise that does seep into the overall test score and artificially decreases applicants' test scores, and that's something that we want to avoid. We're also looking into the strategy of testing applicants at home, rather than calling them into the community college and having them test here. That way, it's a comfortable environment, perhaps reducing test anxiety again. And then if individuals do not have access to getting to the college, this is one way that they would be able to approach a P in something like this. Again, moving on, create module-based testing to single test content areas at a time. Oftentimes, when tests are created, content bleeds into the different areas of a test. I'll use the NCLB, No Child Left Behind test, as an example. If you look at one of those multiple choice tests, you'll frequently see math content interspersed with reading comprehension content, rather than focusing in on all the math questions and then focusing in on all the reading comprehension questions. By transitioning to a module-based testing format, individuals will have an opportunity to focus solely in certain competency areas before moving on to other competency areas. This is something that we can also use in interview strategies, so that individuals have exposure to a single content area before being asked other interview questions on different content areas. Another strategy that we can use is reducing the number of written exams overall when feasible for some tests and for some positions, it makes a lot of sense to use them, but we need to reexamine if we're using them in a very smart and robust way. And I have listed a bunch of alternatives that we can use as opposed to multiple choice testing, such as performance-based testing when individuals participate in physical abilities to demonstrate whether they're capable of performing the job or not. Scored application screening pursuant to the EEOC Uniform Selection Guidelines, an application is legally considered a test. So that's something that we could leverage here. Situational interviews in situations like this for entry-level positions, oftentimes what we want to do is break the interview questions down to very simple component parts and ask individuals about responses to situations. So that's another thing that we can consider implementing. Interviews with job reflective language requirements, we want to make sure that we are not asking questions in overly sophisticated and unnecessary language, we want to make sure that it's representative of the job. Train interview panel members on diversity awareness and bias awareness. This is something that's very important to incorporate into the interview process. A lot of times, individuals, research has shown, have unconscious bias and that does seep into the interview test scores. So by training panel members, that is something that research has also showed we can avoid. Ensure panel members are reflective of our diverse workforce, that's something that we need to use. Candidates want to see panel members that are representative of themselves and the agency that they want to be a part of. agency that they want to be a part of, so that is something that's important to incorporate into the process. Integrate the concepts of face validity, procedural, and interactive justice. Basically, what that means is, for a test, you want to make sure that it's reflective of the job. So you want to incorporate language from a job description into the test itself. In addition to the interactive justice component, you want to make sure that candidates are receiving proper customer service, that they feel like they're part of the process and they feel like they're being heard. Otherwise, they will select themselves out of the process. Institute applicant development sessions. What we want to do here is to make sure that we have promotional opportunity training sessions for internal candidates and for community members, if they're interested in participating. We also want to make sure that individuals have the opportunity to participate in practice test exam sessions. Finally, with recruitment strategies, one thing that we do want to work on is incorporating our celebration of diversity statement within job postings. That is something that we should be proud of, and we should make sure that our community is aware of, and currently, that isn't something that we include. So this is a very easy strategy that we can immediately implement. So that takes me to the end of the slide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions, members of the Board at this time? I can only tell you that this issue is also statewide, has been, and I volunteered our college to be participants in the future of a statewide CCLC, to be involved in these type of subject matters, because they have an interest throughout the system, so... Jean, I'm sorry.
Excellent, no, that's okay. So we appreciate that. Just some quick points which we made on faculty strategies. Again, one of the things we know is, we get out first, we get out quickly. We're also looking to infuse equity in the screening process, questions, screening criteria, to make sure that we are finding the best, those folks who can support our students the most. We've had great success with the internship program, and again, making sure that also, when it comes to be part-time faculty, that we are honoring our commitment to open and full recruitment, and again, approaching it from an equity-minded point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the Board at this time. Chair recognizes Vice President Zia.
Thank you. Great presentation. I also want to thank Superintendent and President Dr. Romali for answering my questions in such a thorough manner, and I think they're out there, printouts of them. Oh, you know, I understand we're making strides, it's... Every year, I sit here and I'm just trying to grapple with these dismal numbers. I mean, we obviously have a good pool of candidates. I think we had, we had about, what, 2,276 is of 2016-17? 80% of which were diverse, ethnically diverse, and we just hired 63 out of them. That's, those are my numbers, and I think that's like 2.8% out of the number of applicants. And we have about just 10 African-Americans out of the 63 hired, just 10. And then Hispanic, 18, and total, those two equal to the white category. I really like the strategies that you're taking, and I think this is great leadership on our superintendent's part, too. You know, one of the things that I've heard in the past is, from employment attorneys or litigators who say, "People like to hire people who look like them," and it's so sad. It's heartbreaking, but it's the ugly truth. So the makeup of these panels, I'm very interested in seeing, you know, if they're pretty homogeneous, then we certainly have to break that mold. I just see there's so much interest in applicants, and it just gives me heartache and a headache, frankly, that we only hire 3% of the applicants. Now, that's not to say they're all qualified, but it just is staggering, and I'm just hopeful that we're going to have this be accelerated, as far as an implementation plan goes, and I'm going to be monitoring this very closely. So I expect reports or, you know, updates on this front, because I really believe in my heart of hearts that our educated workforce and staff should be representative of our students. So with that, I just wanted to just put that out there. Just, hopefully, these numbers will go up higher next year. I don't want to have this conversation again, I hate it.
I would just share with you. We absolutely share your concern. This is something we look at when we dive into the data, and we look, we're picking apart where we are losing diversity in the applicant process, but this is something that Kristin spoke about here so eloquently, especially in classified. We're doing the same thing in faculty, we're doing the same thing in adjuncts. In addition, through the Faculty and Staff Equity Committee, we are doing some work around equity. We are looking into the possibility, no promises, but we're looking at the possibility of having the Center for Urban Education, part of USC's Rossby School of Education, come out and actually assist the committee, so that we can infuse these conversations at all levels. Recently, we went to a faculty equity institute that they put on. We had a great table there from Long Beach, very enthusiastic, from faculty, administrators, staff. So there are a lot of things that we are looking to bring back, so that we can actually bring, not just in theory, talk about this, but bring back the actual real results, so that when it comes to equity, we're not just talking about the equality part, but we're looking at the parity of the result. And so, we share your concerns, we hear it, we appreciate the support, we appreciate the prodding. It just drives us on to do a better job, especially when we look out, and I look out my window, and I see all the students as they walk by, to ensure that we're in the hiring process and in the employment process, we're supporting the student's success, because after all, that is why we're here, that's our product, that's what we do. So we share it. So thank you for those comments.
Can I just ask one question? It's just out of curiosity. When we get the applications, is it possible to, at a glance, not have the names looked at?
So I know that that is a discussion. I don't have an answer for you, it's something we could look into, I'm not sure how easy it is to do.
There's studies that have been done. You know, I know, because as an Iranian-American, for the longest time, I'm not going to name names, but this online platform was discriminating against Iranian names. And one of the things we petitioned to do is that they don't discriminate, obviously. We won that battle. And it was very, it was very interesting to see, when you just make it innocuous, and the applicant's name, so they won't know the name is Shiniqua or Sanazir Azvini, you know? It made a difference in the selection process. So it's just something to think about and consider in your strategies, and if, maybe worthwhile to look at.
The goal is to really remove all implicit bias, and that includes people with bias against names, education, or even where people live.
Sure, Superintendent, President.
I just wanted to thank Jean Duran and Rose Delgado, and our new team member, Kristin. I think they did a phenomenal job in looking at each piece of the data and where we lose candidates, and really examining that, and trying to come up with solutions. I'm really excited about that, and I really like that idea, VP Zia. We'll definitely look into that, because I really think it's imperative that our students look up and see someone who looks and sounds like them, so that they believe that they can one day be that person. It's inspirational, and it helps them achieve, so the imperative is upon us.
Great, thank you.
Other members of the Board at this time. Chair recognizes Trustee Melaloo.
I would also like to thank you. Several, I think it was a year ago, when I first sat here for the very first diversity report, I remember some of the points that stood out, and you've been able to address all of them in this presentation. I looked over your presentation over the weekend, and I was very happy to see that, you know, any lingering issues that we may have had from last year were certainly addressed. And I agree with what has already been said, that it's not just in employment, but certainly in education, students do respond better when being taught by people who look like them or have backgrounds that they can relate to. Similarly to what Trustee Zia suggested about removing names from employment applications, that is already being done at the post-secondary level with admissions. So a lot of colleges and universities are actually removing names from admission packets of students, so that they can just look at the transcripts, the grades, perhaps their admission essay, without actually identifying, you know, their background. So that might be something that we can consider. And I, well, not ironically, but, you know, as expected, the admission pool and those students who are admitted actually are far different than those who normally would have been admitted, had the names been on the applications, because they're actually looking at their performance and their transcripts and how well they've done. So it's a very unique way of thinking and doing things. But thank you, I'm very happy, and I really appreciate the work that you all did. Nice to meet you, Kristin, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the Board at this time. Student trustee.
I just want to, like, lay out, you know, the student perspective, and after being here for about, this is my fifth semester, fourth semester, and, I mean, I can definitely agree with Superintendent President Romali and Vivian and Senator Zia, on the behalf that the students, as a student perspective, when I'm in a class, it feels more welcoming and to be able to understand that the person who's teaching me has gone through similar experiences as us, especially coming with the way that people cease community college, that could be a big factor. But I mean, I feel like eventually, moving forward, covering the names, I think that'd be a great idea. You know, a lot can happen just by a name, and I mean, people make assumptions, and certain names are attached with certain, you know, and that's just kind of the mindset that people shouldn't have. And I just feel that, you know, moving forward, being a little bit more progressive with this, and I mean, you know, being more transparent with all the candidates. That's just on my perspective as a student. I mean, if I have, if I have a professor who's also like a person of color, like me, I feel like we can touch bases, and we might have been through the same, similar experiences. And I mean, for my, for my experience here with all different professors, I mean, Long Beach City College is really diverse. You know, we have people from all different backgrounds and different demographics, and I mean, just seeing that, I think it'd be great if the faculty, classified or academic, represented the demographics that the students are. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions at this time? My appreciation to this report coming out, I only tell people, when I was first elected here and showing up at this college, I looked around, and I said, "The college looks the same as when I was a student here, and that's not a good thing." So the steps we're taking, both from a physical component with the college looking different physically, but also the college itself, because our students are, were very different than when I was attending here, and we do have to address all those issues that were elegantly brought up already. And so this report, it's, it's moving in the right direction, I think we all say, but at the same time, it never moves fast enough, and there's ways we can address it, and we will. So thank you very much for the report at this time. Moving on, that was informational item only. We're now to 4.2, and this is also informational, it's a web relaunch update. Superintendent President?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to introduce John Pope, who is our Director of Community Engagement and Communications. And we, as you know, we have recently launched our new website. And I think it's probably, I've been through many website launches, it's definitely been the smoothest one that I've ever experienced, I want to congratulate the entire team. And John is going to show you today our beautiful new website, and just kind of take you on a test run through it. I want to thank him and his team, who worked tremendously hard on this, and thank the college as a whole, who got information up and ready for him. Good job, take it away, John.
All right, thank you, Dr. Romali, President Kellogg, and trustees. In the interest of respect for the World Series, I'm going to keep this to five minutes, and I'm going to time myself just to make sure that we're on track, okay, if that sounds good. So with me tonight is Mo Wright, our Web Content and Electronic Media Coordinator, and also Rob Carman, our Deputy Director of Mobile and Web Services. Also want to acknowledge Sylvia Lynch. This is the core team that really put a lot into this project and really handled the heavy lift. So Mo is going to help me test drive a little bit, as we show you some of the key features of the site. But before we do that, I just wanted to mention, we really did a lot of research and focus groups on the front end, to make sure that we captured all perspectives in this website. So just a quick list of who we went out and gathered input from. We went to current students, prospective students out of Cabrillo High School, faculty, staff, administrators, parents of students, that was an interesting focus group, and also parents of potential students. So these were non-committal students and parents who were thinking about where to send them. We got their input, residents, community members, and also business leaders. So we got a really wide spectrum of people to give us input, but then we, from that input, we synthesized it into a couple guiding principles. One is student-focused, mobile-friendly, design-thinking. And that really means putting students at the center of the website, and thinking about it not in terms of reproducing our org chart, but almost doing what community colleges are doing in terms of academics. When we talk about guided pathways, the difference between the cafeteria model and the guided pathways model, that's what we want to bring into the website. So guided pathways that could help students navigate and get to the information that they need. So the first thing that we'd like to show you is the homepage. So the new design is clearly more visually appealing with a unique Viking-themed design. And for our, I don't know if we have any art faculty with us today, but some of these backgrounds, I should note, are Viking woodcuts that our design team found in old reproductions of historical documents and incorporated them into the homepage of our design. So that's something very unique to us, as well as the Viking iconography. So the first thing you'll see at the top are some of the things that the students really told us needed to be the most visible. So the class schedules, the student portals, the academic calendar, phone direct research and quick links. So I'll talk more about Get Started in a moment. But the top photos through our carousel are kind of our, you know, most dynamic and key areas where we can really focus people with appealing content. So these are going to be a mix of, you know, the important deadlines, features such as the women in welding, a department showcase, so last week, we featured dance, this week at COS, and upcoming events such as the planetarium shows. And just below that, Mo, if you can scroll down, we've got some key links here, also on the icon, we have our news section, where we can, you know, keep that dynamic and fluid. Also, as you scroll over, it's very responsive, so you can kind of see the headline pop up, and it's just very attractive visually, and contains a lot of photos. So Mo, if you could scroll down. The Future Path is one way that students can access our services. So as you can see, there's links for first-time, veterans, dual enrollment, international students. Viking Voices was something that we really wanted to showcase on the new site. This is a rebrand from the feature that we used to call Meet Our Students. Viking Voices is now featured much more prominently, and the students really told us that this was important to them, to see themselves and their own stories reflected. So we are going to continue to interview our students, to showcase their success stories. The Long Beach College Promise was also something we really wanted to showcase. Finally, we're here to help, and these boxes can be swapped out based on the time of the year. So if we have certain deadlines coming up, certain things that students are saying that they particularly need extra help with, we can put that in the box, and of course, upcoming events. So I did want to take a moment to show you the Get Started section, because that is something that is a new innovation for it. And we created different pathways based on the student experience. So I said, first-time, veteran, dual enrollment, we have international students, returning students, and then at the bottom, a link to the transfer center. A much more robust financial aid page, if you want to call that up. So the financial aid team has been great to work with in really setting up something that is going to be much more useful for the students. And I'm really glad with this new system that we can showcase things that are, that were previously buried. The Financial Aid TV, that's a great resource that the college pays to be able to access. So now, it's right there, front and center. Things like Robyn's Get Sap Workshop, which is great information on financial aid, the forms, and even a calculator that can show students how much the whole college experience is going to cost them. So in terms of getting into our, some of our programs, we created two different pathways. One is called Explore Our Programs, and this is where students can find a program based on their general interests. So this is not necessarily aligned with our departments, but it groups things, okay, that's my time, or so I'm going to wrap up. It groups things by area of interest. They can also go in through the departments themselves. So we have a whole listing of our academic departments. So say they want to pick visual and media arts, they can go there, look at what the department offers, see a listing of available programs, and what degrees and certificates they offer. So we think that it's a much more intuitive, mobile-friendly site. One thing about a website is it's never done, we're going to continue to improve and make this a better product. We now have a great team with us, who is devoted to that, to being responsive to our campus community's needs. Our partner, Digital Deployment, I wanted to recognize, our vendor, who's done, been a great partner on this, and will continue to be a partner, because they're going to maintain and host the site in secure servers. Also, very quickly, our ad hoc advisory group, Elijah Sims, Usam Keshu, Scott Volker, Brian Hamilton, Morgan Barnard, really appreciated all their input. And finally, to the trustees for your support of this project, you recognized two years ago that there was a great need for this. ago that there was a great need for this across the campus. We heard it from everyone a lot. And so with your support, not only of the securing the vendor who was able to do the design work for us, as well as the support of ongoing positions, we were able to make this a reality. So I thank you and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Members of the board at this time?
Fantastic. Great job. Excellent. Beautiful. Really well done.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
Thank you very much. That concludes 4.2. We're now to 4.3. This is the Long Beach City College 90th Anniversary. It's a presentation, it's also informative, so no vote required. Thank you, John. By the way, the comment, only because I'm going to say it's, it's one-to-one in the fourth inning for you Dodger fans. And it brings to mind the famous quote, "If you want to understand the hearts and minds of America, you better learn baseball." I have no idea who said that, but it's sort of true. So here we are, fascinated with this. 1-1 in the fourth. You're up.
Okay. Thank you, President Kellogg. So I will dive right into the 90th Anniversary with the same expediency. Just to recognize some of the goals with our 90th, it's really a chance to, first of all, create awareness that Long Beach City College has been here for 90 years and we've been an institution in this community for 90 years. So just the awareness and that connection to the community, the pride, the graduates that have come through here, the, our current students, to really build that sense of pride that we are now part of, you know, a great piece of history for the city of Long Beach and for the community college system in general. Recognition for the college and how far we've come, everything that previous generations were be able to accomplish and that we're building on. And then, of course, fundraising, ultimately in support of our students. So the first thing I hope that you've all noticed around the campus is our 90th Anniversary logo. I think it's very attractive. And one thing about it that I don't know if everyone's noticed, but I wanted to point out that we have incorporated icons from PCC and LAC. And this is so, this is a logo that really unites the two campuses in a way that we haven't done before. So I think that's something that I hope everyone in the campus community can, can take pride with. You know, the, the bell tower is such a classic icon and now we're able to match that with, hopefully, what will become also classic icons from our PCC campus. So we've installed 40 at each campus, so they're quite visible and hard to miss, which I think is a good thing. And then I wanted to mention our history project. So you just saw the new website. We have been working with Pat McKean, who's, you all know, Journalism Faculty member and has been involved with many of our history projects to date. He's written a lot of the history books. And so when we were looking at some of the projects this year, we thought, well, the 90th doesn't seem quite right to do a history book because that's going to happen at the 100th, no doubt. We'll want to do a nice one for that. So what could we do now that was a new innovative thing? And what we came up with was a history section for the website. We've never had that before. And so with our new website, Pat's been working on interviews, kind of oral histories, with about 20 members of past and present of the campus community. So that's going to be featured on our new website as we build up that history section this year. And he's also going to be helping us with some other work to kind of lay the foundation for what will become, I think, an excellent resource online, you know, very transparent, widely accessible for the college history. Because previously, as great as the books were, if you didn't have access to them, you couldn't get all that great history. So by putting it on the web, we think that's going to be a great resource. So back down to the, you know, the very ancient history, all the way into the 80s, which is where this fun photo was taken. We also want to brand some of our events too with the 90th Anniversary idea and the logo. So in February, State of the College, you'll see it featured prominently and we'll recognize that. Commencement, of course, this year will be our 90th Anniversary commencement. Things like Science Night, the grand openings and groundbreakings can all be kind of acknowledged as a 90th Anniversary resource. I was also asked about the photo. We will be doing that again. And we are, I have been talking to Anne Marie, the Vice President, about the possibility of a staff picnic type of event. So that's something that's also in the works. And with that, I will turn it over to Liz for the gala.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here this evening to talk about our exciting anniversary. So first, I want you all just to put this date on your calendar. It's Saturday, June 16, 2018, and we are going to be celebrating the conclusion of our 90th year and our 90th graduating class with, with a gala. All right. So we are looking at the location. We, we, the event will be located here on the Liberal Arts Campus and we're working with facilities right now to actually determine the best place to set up the event so that it fits with the vision for the event, which I'll talk a little bit more about. We would like this to be a, you know, an upscale event, black tie optional, semi-formal. We're Long Beach, we don't get too dressy here, but we really want people to feel like they can break out their tuxedos and their, their longer dresses for this one. We plan to have a reception, a VIP reception for some of our event sponsors, a dinner, live and silent auctions. We will have honorees or an honoree and we are planning on making the, the program for the evening really mission-centric to our college. And we'll be tying that into some of the different components of the evening as well with the live, the live and the silent auctions and making sure that we're giving people experiences that are really, really unique to Long Beach City College. We're talking about a, also just some other notes on the event, we're talking about having a 1920s-themed event since we were founded in 1927. And we've had some interaction from the community with some of the different vintage car clubs and things. So those are some of the little elements we're planning on incorporating into this event as well. And while this will be our 90th celebration event, we also are looking to really create this event moving forward in the years ahead to be a signature fundraising event for the And we will be on the note of the date, we'll be sending out save the dates ahead of the holidays so we get that out to our general public. We also have a 90th Anniversary Celebration Gala Planning Committee and I'm going to cover, we actually have two committees. So we have one committee, this is more of our nuts and bolts committee that'll be involved in the details of planning the event. And you can see we have a nice group of people here. I do want to add that Jorge Ochoa is also on our committee. We had to get these presentations in really early, so, and he joined us. Our committee has been meeting. We actually started meeting in kind of a smaller committee, gosh, going back over a year now, John, and doing some initial planning and thoughts around, around the 90th and then also around what this gala might look like. My internal staff have been meeting to talk about the gala well before we started pulling together this large committee. This large committee has two meetings under our belts now. We have a lot of really great ideas. I'm just, I feel very lucky to work with each of these individuals and I know that this event's going to be a great success. And then our, our next committee, and this, this takes up three screens, so we'll go through it, but this is our 90th Anniversary Celebration Gala Committee. And this is actually the, the outward community-facing committee for, for the celebration because we really want to include all of our chief community leaders, philanthropists, and all of these really prominent individuals who are involved with the college. And so you'll see we have quite a, quite a robust list there. We also have several others that we're still, still confirming their participation and I will keep you all updated on that.
All right. Questions, any comments at this time for the board on the 90th? Can I just encourage, I saw the term "a book" coming out, going to be written, and only because of previous where I've seen too. So I would just encourage and ask that when, when that draft of that, that publication is completed, it is shown to the members of the board before it becomes a public document. The reason for that is simply because I've seen those things go sideways and I don't want to see it happen again with, not here, but with the city of Long Beach. And they had a, they had a book that was published that the governing body was not happy with it and it could have been resolved. So I'm just encouraging you to, whatever, whatever that book is going to look like, and I'm not saying a chapter is dedicated to each trustee.
Oh darn, we've already written it that way, sorry.
But nonetheless, could you please make sure that this board gets a, gets a review of that before it becomes public?
Thank you, President Kellogg. And just to clarify, we're not doing a book this year for the 90th. I was just looking ahead and assuming that that would probably be happening for the 100th, but I don't want to get too far ahead of the board and the staff. So there, so our, our web component will be what we're going to put in place for this year and kind of build on that.
And the Superintendent President knows what I was referring to when I was making those comments, so, thank you. Comments, members of the board this time?
President Kellogg, I have a...
Vice President Zia?
Well, first of all, this is fantastic. Great job, both of you. So when are we starting the outreach for the gala into the community?
No, we'll actually be, that's a great question, and we'll be sending out our save the dates. We're working on compiling the list. We're planning to get the save the dates out in advance of the holidays so that they don't get lost with holiday cards and all the various things that come in at that time. We actually have the save the date developed. We'll be sending it out as a very nice, you know, sized postcard mailer to all of our different constituent lists here in the college. We have a variety of different lists that we'll be sending that out too. From there, we'll be working on developing the, all the printed pieces, the invitations, the sponsorship packages, so that'll all come out early in the, early in the new year.
Okay, that's fantastic. And I just want to, I see all of us are on the committee, so happy to promote it high and this will be fantastic. I'm hopeful that it's going to generate good money for our foundation and support our students. So thank you for all your hard work. And with that, I have no other questions, President Kellogg.
And I hope that didn't surprise anybody that we put your names up there. We just felt like at a protocol, all of the trustees should be included. And we know, we'll be working very closely with Sunny as our foundation liaison and are grateful for her.
Sure. I am grateful to be on the, as, serve as a liaison, but it is part of our advocacy role, so it's not presumptuous. It's fantastic that you, you're counting on us to be on this committee.
All right. Thank you very much. 90th year for Long Beach City College. Other comments at this time, hearing none? We're now at the consent calendar item. Any items needing to be removed from the consent calendar by members of the board?
I'd like to remove 5.15, please.
And my apologies, you did tell me that before. 5.15 is going to be pulled by Trustee Malauulu. No other items at this time. I'm going to ask that we entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto. The motion, student trustee, is that to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item 5.15, with the exception of the items 5.17, 5.18, 6.1 and 6.3, that the student trustee, because of financial, et cetera, cannot vote on. But on everything else, so student trustee, your vote on the consent calendar item with the exception of those items.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, at this time, I'm going to pull item 1.5.15. Trustee Malauulu, would you like to make a comment and then I'll ask for a motion on this item? I'm sorry.
Excuse me. We're taking the vote on the consent.
Pardon me?
We need to do the roll call on the consent.
On the entire consent? Madam Secretary, call the roll on the entire consent calendar.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved with the exception of item 5.15. Could I entertain a motion for item 5.15? Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Zia. 5.15, Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu on this item.
I would like to recuse myself from participating in any discussion or voting of this item as it does involve both my employer and my union at work. So I'm going to step outside.
And this item, the student trustee may or may not vote on?
He may.
All right. So we have a motion, a second on 5.1...
Excuse me, I have the motion. Who's the second?
Trustee Zia.
Who's the first?
Trustee Otto.
Thank you.
Motion, a second on this item. Student trustee, on item 5.15, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu? She's going to, she's going to be marked abstain. Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes our consent calendar. You might want to tell trustees, maybe trustee Malauulu wanted to go check the score, so... We're now to... She did check the score, 1-1. We're now to 5.17. Academic personnel, student trustee, you will not be voting on this item. This is a action item, the Board of Trustees to approve, ratify the academic personnel actions as submitted.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto. The attachments, any questions on this item? I'm sorry, Madam Secretary?
Did you read the first paragraph of what's included in the contract?
I will if I have it.
The one that begins, the employment contract provides?
6.1.
6.1.
I do, I'm sorry. 6.1, the Board of Trustees approve the employment contract for Jason Avila, Inter Manager, Extended Opportunity Program Services, EOPS, as submitted. The employment contract provides for a term employment from October 9, 2017 through June 30, 2018. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $85,426, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. That is a motion, a second on the floor. Again, no discussion at this time. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Excuse me, I have the motion. Who's the second?
Trustee, trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia.
I believe that was trustee Zia was the maker of the motion, trustee Otto was the...
Trustee Otto, trustee Zia.
Thank you.
We're all the same.
I thought I said that earlier, but...
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Student trustee, oh, you cannot vote on the contract, yes.
At least that's the note you gave me. 6.2, reorganization structure. This is informational, so I'll recognize our student, student president for information on this item.
Thank you. As an informational item, since getting here, I have looked at the organization and come up with a small reorganization plan that has a variety of goals to it. Those goals are to decrease the dollars that are being spent on senior administration, drive the dollars that are saved into enrollment management to increase enrollment in an attempt to resolve our budget deficit and create long-term stable enrollment, drive the dollars saved into student-facing services rather than into administrative costs, and align reporting relationships with the strategic plan. So if folks are working together on projects for the strategic plan, they would have the same or similar reporting relationships to eliminate any bureaucratic activity and to move things through quickly to resolve the strategic plan objections, objectives for our students. So just a couple of highlights of what that would involve. We would eliminate the position of Executive Vice President of College Advancement and Economic Development, which was Dr. Luanne Bynum's old position. I have been performing that job for the last couple of months since her retirement. And what we would do is appoint Anne Marie Gabel as Executive Vice President and move that, all of Luanne's duties and that reporting relationship headed by Sheney Weber Cade, Workforce and Economic Development, over to Anne Marie Gabel. We would then create an enrollment management team headed by an Executive Director of PR and Marketing and a Director of Community Relations and Enrollment Development and add one and a half recruiters, which we call outreach assistants. And we would also add to that team the President's ambassadors. John Pope and his team would also report under there. This executive director position would report directly to myself. We also are looking to create an Associate Dean of Student Support Services and eliminate a Director of Triple S.P. What my goal is, is to not hire a director for every grant that we have. What that means is we will hire directors for the large grants, but as we have little grants, we will consolidate those little grants, depending on the amount of work, under grants, we will consolidate those little grants, depending on the amount of work, under an associate dean, and add, that way, that way, we drive administrative costs down and drive money from the grants back to the actual grant purpose. We have elevated the student equity function to move directly and have a reporting relationship to the dean of counseling. And we've done a slight reorganization within academic affairs to retitle the dean of academic services into the current title in academia today, dean of academic affairs, for clarity, and had new reporting relationships, particularly the new associate dean of academic affairs, which will work on guided pathways and student success initiatives, and our director of adult basic education, Stephanie Lewis, to report to that position as well. The purpose of that is to align, because there is a tremendous amount of curriculum and scheduling work that is to be done there if we're to achieve those goals. And Michelle Grimes-Hillman, as the dean there, is in charge of that, and this is an example of how we're going to eliminate some bureaucracy and get some good work done The, also, we're going to have a dotted line reporting structure of the director of instructional technology and distance learning over to the vice president of academic affairs, because we need a focus on online educational resources, online education, zero-cost degrees, and lower textbook costs. So there needs to be involvement from our academic affairs and academic senate on that. So just wanted to give you that for informational purposes. We have vetted this through all of our bodies, our union structure and our senate structure, and have taken all of their input into consideration to form this.
Members of the board, question, comments on the reorganization at this time? Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
Superintendent President Romali, I have a comment and a question. The comment is, thank you very much, I appreciate the reorganization and the efforts that everybody on board has made to make this happen. My question is, do you have a projected amount of savings with some of these changes? Has that been analyzed yet?
Yes. These savings, we are able to, with the elimination of those positions and the adds, it's going to cost me about $20,000 a year, which I'm very excited about, because we're eliminating a lot of administrative positions and adding a tremendous number of recruiters and community relations team members. So we're getting a tremendous bang for our buck there.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand. Sorry. So this is actually going to increase our expenses by 20,000, but...
Yes.
We're adding how many more people?
Three and a half.
So for three and a half more personnel at the cost of 20,000, got it? Okay, I understand.
That would be the elimination of the EVP in favor of the executive director of PR, in favor of the director, and in favor of the one and a half recruiters.
Okay, got it. Yeah, that's definitely, that's pretty good. So you're getting three and a half more people for about $3,000.
Correct.
Good, good stuff. Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Chair recognizes, Vice President Zia.
Thank you, President Kellogg. I just wanted to commend you, Superintendent President, Dr. Romali. This is something that is very refreshing, I have to say. I went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and I think it's very strategic, it's very well-thought-out. I just, I know I communicated with you earlier, but just for the benefit of the public, I believe the narrative needs to be modified, and I don't know if there's copies out there, if you want to speak to that.
Yes, my apologies. We made a, I made a sentence error in one of the structures, so you will see a letter out there. There's 50 copies that we made for the public that clarifies that and corrects that. Thank you.
Right. And the correction, just so for the members of the public that are not present here, I believe the narrative initially had said that the, forgive me for the titles, Sheni Weber would be reporting directly to you, but in fact, Sheni would be reporting to, if approved, the executive vice president, Anne Marie Gabel. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then, marketing and PR would then report directly to me.
Right. I think that's a fabulous reorganization strategy. I'm hopeful that it will drive our enrollment and put the focus on students and have a student-first focus. So thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing the results.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Student trustee?
Okay, so after reviewing it and talking with our ASB president, Javier, we noticed that the associated student body wasn't part of the chart, and we just wanted to see, as far as like student involvement within the ranks, where I noticed that president's ambassadors was going to be, it's there, and like, I mean, that's, aside from that, we were trying to see where exactly students could have a voice, or where exactly the process, where would they be part of that?
That's a great question. This is a management reorganization, so everyone, with the exception of the president's ambassadors, is listed. The reason I put the ambassadors there is they're part of the president's team, so I kind of consider them in the management ranks, so to speak. In terms, so it doesn't include the classified staff, or the faculty, or the students, so you would see them on a larger organizational chart. But in terms of feedback, they sit on the senior leadership team, which meets every other Tuesday, and so they've been involved in every single one of the major decisions, including this organizational structure. And so they've been able to provide some really key input that's given us wisdom on not only this, but on all the major decisions of the day.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Aside from that, I mean, yeah, that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. This is an informational item only, so we'll move on to the next one. Subject is 6.3, ratification of district in LBCC/ACT memorandum of understanding, tenant agreement. This is the recommended action that the Board of Trustees ratify the MOU, tenant agreement dated October 10, 2017, reached between the district and the LBCC/AVT, addressing fiscal years 2017, 18, 1819, and 1920, contingent on ratification by the LBCC/ACT as submitted. I'll recognize trustee Otto on questions on this, and then I'll ask for a motion.
Yeah, well, actually, before I go into questions, what I'd like to do is to make a motion. And that motion is to continue this for 30 days to give us an opportunity to study it a little more carefully. In my opinion, these are precarious financial times for Long Beach City College. We are about to enter into stabilization, and for those of you who don't know...
Can I ask, can I just make the motion, and then we can do the discussion item? So the motion is?
The motion is to, like I said, to continue this for 30 days to tell our next meeting.
And for discussion, I'll open it up. Is there a second to it? If not, I will step in as a second to allow discussion on that. There is no discussion on to lay this item over for 30 days. Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Thank you. So as I was beginning to say, I believe these are precarious financial times. We are about to enter into stabilization. What stabilization means is that we are betting that at the end of next year, if we have not achieved the growth that we need to achieve, or the enrollment that we need to, our enrollment will be, not our enrollment, but our reimbursement will be frozen at that level, and that's a very serious thing to take into consideration. That's particularly serious, because what we're betting on is that we're going to increase our enrollment, and every other college is trying to do that in this area as well. We have, so we're in competition with all of them. The pools are smaller, because the unified school districts are graduating, and they're enrolling fewer students. So I also think that the economy is beginning to weaken a little bit. That's why I think that our financial position is precarious, and what we are doing with this, with this agreement, is proposing to, by my calculations, taking into consideration not only the increases that, over the next three years, that will be given to the classifieds, but the step and column increases, the implementation that would be, would be required to make this go forward. It's over a 10% increase. I support our classified employees wholeheartedly. I think that they deserve to be given a fair wage, but that's always measured in terms of where the college is at some particular time. The reason I'm making this motion to continue this is to give me an opportunity to look at this more carefully and to get some data that I don't believe that I have had. I don't think that in my over 10 years as a member of this Board of Trustees, I have ever been presented at the same meeting with a quick opportunity to look at something, much less something as complicated or as important as this, and then vote on it at the same meeting. I saw no reason why we couldn't put this over to get that additional information, to make me comfortable. I have expressed that I'd be happy to go along with this if I had more time to do it, and that's why I'm making the motion to continue this item until the next meeting. I see no prejudice, and I'd like to make this unanimous vote, if at all possible.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second on the floor, to lay this item over 30 days. Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
I'd like to speak against this motion. I don't think it's necessary. I think that the tentative agreement that has been presented is fair for both sides, both the district as well as the classified staff. I think that the points that trustee Otto brings up are valid points that were brought up at the negotiating table that have already been discussed. And now that there is a tentative agreement on the table, the issue is just to vote on it and to approve it. I think prolonging the vote for another 30 days is really wearing on the morale of our classified staff, our negotiating teams, and everybody who spent so much time working on this and researching and coming back, and basically negotiating in good faith. So now that an agreement is on the table, and, you know, both the district and the classified staff are, you know, in favor of it, I believe the number was like 200-something to four, from what I heard, and the fact that our board president, as well as our superintendent president, are in support of it speaks volumes. This college is moving forward in many areas, and contract negotiating is certainly one of them. So again, I'd like to speak against this motion. I don't think it's necessary, and, you know, when the time calls, I would like to just move forward and ask for a vote on this motion, on this item. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Zia?
Yes, thank you, President Kellogg. I, too, will not support this motion of laying it over. I think we were presented with all the facts and the information. I have full confidence in our staff on both negotiating sides, and I don't see any reason, in fact, I would see it as counterproductive to second-guess the good-faith effort on both parties' side and go in there and do my own investigation. I think it's unnecessary, it's wrong, and to dovetail on trustee Malauulu's points, I would consider it demoralizing. If I'm a classified staff, I would be demoralized. From the day I remember taking office, this has been a persistent issue, that the classified staff deserve equity, they deserve the right, and I am excited to vote for the item that is on the agenda, and I will vote this motion down.
Thank you. Other members? Trustee, trustee Otto?
I want to be clear about why I'm doing this. I don't do this lightly. I believe that this is a matter of principle, both in terms of the way the negotiations have been done and what the potential outcome is for the college going into the future. By my and other calculations, if the labor negotiations that we are in now continue in the way that they are, we will cross into what I consider no-go land, which means that this college will be spending over 90%, perhaps over 91% of its resources, the money that it gets, on salaries and benefits. And I think that's a place where we ought not to go. We're not there yet, but we're heading in that direction. I don't take this action lightly. I try and work carefully and harmoniously with my board, but given the short timeframe in which I was given to look at this and its variance from what our authority was in the last go-round on this particular issue, I felt that it was necessary to take this position.
Thank you. The reason I brought, I removed myself from the chair, and I second the motion, because trustee Otto did make the request about having some more time to look at it, and in the sense of, in the fact that I worked closely with our superintendent president on giving some directions on these labor negotiations, I'm very pleased with the terms that have happened. I think it's positive for all parties, and obviously, I'm very supportive of that. But also, in the sense that, as working with a board, you try to come to consensus, the argument is always, well, there's not always that in democracy, which is true, but if you have the opportunity, and the fact I have one trustee that is not here today, that I wanted to give the opportunity to vote on it, and then to give trustee Otto the time to where he can be supportive of it, I thought that would be very good on behalf of the board. And therefore, I second the motion to give that opportunity. It obviously is not going to pass, if I can count correctly, and then we'll move on to the issue that I am, again, very supportive of, but I understand trustee Otto's concern. If anyone could apologize on something I did as a member, as a president of the board, I put these items on enclosed session for it to be discussed, and they were, and then they become open session items as well. The intent of open session is if the board wishes to pursue that night. It's not required, there's no need to. I don't think that the individuals with the classified staff negotiating teams' feelings were going to be hurt. I did mention to them during the process that this does happen, that it's going to potentially be laid over, but the terms are not going to be renegotiated. The agreement is the agreement. So in the spirit of trying to work with colleagues to get some type of cooperation, to have a 5-0 vote, that was really my intent, and I would like to have seen it, because I think it is good for all parties. If it doesn't happen, then we move on, but I think it's important that board members try to work with each other, to give them the opportunity to feel comfortable on a vote, and that's my personal feeling, therefore, why I second the motion. So there is discussion on this item, there is a motion, a second on it. Madam Secretary, if you please, call the roll on this item.
On the motion number two?
Motion is to lay the item for 30 days.
To continue the next board meeting.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Nay.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Nay.
The item fails on a 2-2 vote, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the ratification.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Malauulu, second by trustee Zia, on this ratification. Comments, questions, members of the board at this time?
I'd like to make a comment.
Chair recognizes Vice President Zia.
I just wanted to thank all of you who have worked so hard on this. I know it's not easy. Now, I, too, share concerns that have been brought up, and, you know, as someone who is fiscally conservative, I think it's important for us to be prudent with our spending. Why don't we start off with the amount, and the millions of dollars we spend on contract services? It is incredible to me to see that never brought up by the people who oppose our employee contracts. If we can save more money there, we can put it into better use for our employees and our human capital, and that is why I'll continue to nickel-and-dime every contract that will affect our general funds, and will always support our employees and our faculty and classified staff. Thank you.
Other members? Chair recognizes trustee Malauulu.
So, you know, sometimes my memory is not as reliable as I'd like it to be, and I'm out of my first year, so I can't say I'm new anymore. So forgive me if I speak in error, but I remember some time ago, a particular classified staff member who'd been here for years and years, 30 years, who was requesting or had, and again, I'm sorry, I'm messing up the story, but basically, he was requesting, he was going to retire, and he said he would stay on because they needed help if he got some kind of minor promotion, very minor promotion. Anyway, that was denied, but then he retires, and within six weeks or so, this position magically appears for like a director or somebody that was, you know, would have been his superior. And I just remember that story, sitting around with classified staff, listening to multiple stories like that, and they were extremely demoralizing. And I also remember hearing how there's never any money for classified staff, there's never any money for this and that, for hiring an extra person, or anything that the classified staff, our support staff, our secretaries, custodians, so many people on campus that do so much, their numbers are greater, but these management positions pop up, and these director positions pop up, and that wears on our staff. And that becomes apparent in our services, and it becomes apparent when you walk through the hallways, and when you walk into offices, and students pick up on it, and faculty members pick up on it. And we have a saying in education that faculty working conditions are reflected in student learning conditions, and I believe the same is true in staff. So this contract, I know it took a long time, they've been working without a contract since the end of June. It took several months to agree to it. Both sides are happy. It's long overdue, and I think both sides learned a lot in the process, and I think it's becoming easier, and the mutual respect is there, and I'm happy to see that there is an agreement on the table where people are walking away, saying that they feel good about it, that it's... saying that they feel good about it, that it's fair, and I want to keep using the word "fair," because so many times in negotiating, contracts are just not fair, there are too many concessions, there are too many give and take, and one side has more than the other. So the fact that we actually have something where the word "fair" is used on both sides says a lot. So I'm definitely in favor of this. I'm excited to see what the future holds. Take a deep breath, you've got three years before you have to do this again. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. My thanks to superintendent president, negotiating team, the individuals with classified staff. Actually, we talked about how such a long time for people that have been around for a period of time realize that this is probably the quickest we've ever had in an agreement with the classified staff. And this is compounded with the previous one, which was three, four years ago, which was a, I believe, a very well-received contract moving forward. I would just like to thank the fact that I, as the board president, being involved just by chance of the contract negotiations four years ago and the contract negotiation here, in the sense that as the board president, you really serve a sounding board, talking to superintendent president what she thinks, you know, the board's going to be. And I'm very pleased with this. I wish it could be a all-members voting in favor, and I think that's unfortunate, but it is what it is, and that's why I was trying to give a courtesy to a colleague, nothing more than that. But to all the individuals that were part of this negotiating, to work as aggressively as they did, my sincere thanks to you for being reasonable, looking at the issue in a way. We as a board though have to put all the pieces together with the other bargaining units, so this, of course, will have an impact on other negotiations we're doing as well. That's just the way it is in labor negotiations. But I must say that in the past, and so four years ago when this took place, I never forgot the fact that we were going through an extremely difficult time with the recession of 2008. I remind people that it was our classified staff that really stepped up more than any other bargaining units and really did some things to help us get through some very difficult times, and I never forgot that. The fact that they did do things that were not, they were not popular, they probably didn't help the labor, the negotiators, the leadership, and yet they did it because they understood that the college needed their help. And so regardless of that impacts me on labor negotiations, I think this was a good agreement. And it's a good agreement because a lot of people sat down and worked towards a conclusion that we have here tonight. Again, my apologies, unfortunately, I wanted it to be the 5-0 vote because I think that was the intent of everybody, but now we move forward, and to have a three-year is also a positive. There is a re-opener in this, but that is for the future consideration. So again, my congratulations to all parties involved. My sincere thanks for working in the past and currently on getting to this agreement. With that, there's no other questions, members of the board. Chair Director, trustee Otto?
I want to be real clear because I want to make sure that my position is understood. I didn't say no. I said woah. And woah means I didn't have enough time from Friday or Saturday to today to look at all the implications of what this has brought. My recollection was the last time this board gave authority to the negotiating team, it said 1.57% increase, which corresponded to COLA, and what we're now offering is three. And it's a three-year agreement that adds up in and of itself to 7.5%. Given everything else that's going on, I said, you know, I don't see why not. I've obviously lost that vote, but I think that, given not only the goals of the Board of Trustees, but my fiduciary obligation as a member of this Board of Trustees, that it was important for me to understand completely not only what the agreement was, how it got there, but what the implications of that would be for the college in the future. I know many of you remember what happened in the wake of the recession when we had to go to lay off full-time faculties, and we're trying to avoid situations like that. And I didn't think that asking for an additional 30 days to consider this when there were no, there was no real urgency to not allowing that was too much to ask, but I've been voted down. It's fine.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on this item.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
No.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you very much. 6.38 passes. Congratulations. Dodgers are ahead, by the way, so good news all around. 3-1. Next item, I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, what item?
7.1.
I gotta do something with this vote. Hold on. It's gonna, won't let me go forward.
7.1. I should have looked out of the audience and would have seen people go, it's 7.1. Please vote for us. 7.1, resolution authorizing insurance and sales of general obligation refunding bonds. This is an action item. Student trustee, you may vote on this? Okay.
Yes.
And so the Board of Trustees, this is to, on October 23, 2012, approve the issuance of 237 million plus change of the district's general obligation bonds, 2008 election series B. This resolution authorizes the refunding of all the portions of the outstanding principles amount of those 2012 bonds, which are subject to refunding provided certain conditions in the financial marketplace remain favorable for the refunding. The issuance of the 2017 bonds shall generate present value savings to the taxpayers of no less than 5%. I'll turn either superintendent president or vice president Gable, do you, anyone want to make any comments on this before I recognize my board members and ask for a motion? Just for information, so people know what we are voting on. This is all very positive, I believe.
Yes, this is actually fabulous. What we are bringing forward is the resolution to allow us to refinance some of our general obligation bonds. So similar to if you were to refinance your home mortgage, we're trying to do the same thing with our general obligation bonds. And as of the market rates of October 19th, it looks like that we will be able to save the taxpayers roughly $19 million or, you know, around 20% of the debt that was originally issued back in 2012. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity for our taxpayers, and it's something that we are hoping that the board will approve for us to move forward. The net present value amount of the savings will change depending upon the market of when we do go out to sell the bonds, which will be later in December.
I do need a motion from members of the board this time?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Otto, second by trustee Zia. This is an action item. Members of the board, questions, comments on this item?
Yes.
Chair Director, vice president Zia?
So what is the actual saving that we're going to be realizing, this is as of present year, correct? What does that 5% equal to?
That, the 5% that's in the resolution is just a threshold in case the market were really to tank between now and then, that we would want to make sure that we're going to have at least a 5% net present value savings, and if we don't, then we wouldn't go forward with the financing. At this point in time, we're estimating that we'll have over 20% in savings, so I don't see that that's going to be an issue, but that is, the 5% is the lowest amount of savings that we would want to garner in order to move forward with the refinancing.
Right. What does that translate to monetarily, money-wise? 5% to 20%, what's the dollar value that is going to be the net savings for the taxpayers?
Well, we don't have the exact net savings, and we won't know that until we actually go out to the market and sell the bonds. As I mentioned, that as of October 19th, the dollar amount of savings is around $19 million, but that will change depending upon what the market is at the day that we actually go to sell them.
Okay, so the $19 million is based on what is the current rate as of October 19? Do we know what the minimum of that 5% level is that we won't go under?
About $4 million.
So have we calculated the net present value per taxpayer? So we have a range of 4 to 19 million, correct? Do we know what it would be per individual? Because I know that all, roughly 500,000 people in Long Beach are not all taxpayers when it comes to their homes, right? Because they're not all homeowners.
Correct. This is only taxed on homes, and so...
I think we have someone that can perhaps speak to.
Yeah, so Adam Bauer is our financial analyst, so Adam, maybe you can answer that question?
You might want to go to the podium.
Getting to how much each individual homeowner is going to save, the typical homeowner within your boundaries has a assessed value of $364,000. And so when we look at that net present value of approximately 20%, that's over a number of years. I would need to take a few minutes to do the calculation and say how much they're going to save per year, but you're, like I said, your typical home is 364,000.
So that would be 90 million divided by 364?
The 19 million is for all the homeowners within your, or all the taxable property within your district's boundaries. And so in order to calculate on a per-home basis, I would just need to take a minute to do the calculation.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you take the minute and then let us know?
Trustee Zia, could I recommend that when we go through with the sale, that we come back with the exact dollar amount of savings per homeowner within? I mean, then we'll have the exact number, and we won't be kind of guessing?
Well, it sounds like it's going to only take a minute. Maybe other trustees have questions that in the meantime they can ask, and while the calculations, I don't need to have a dissertation on the topic, but just want to know rough order of magnitude.
Other members of the board? Chair Director, trustee Otto?
Yeah, I know a little bit about this kind of work, and I think that the simple calculation would not be meaningless but close. And what I'd rather do is give them the opportunity to spend some more time, if that's an important number to come to. I'm not sure it is for me, but if we're able to save 19, have to save $19 million for our taxpayers, that's good enough for me. The reason it's complicated is because there are so many properties, and different people own multiple properties, and there may be different calculations, and I just don't think it can be done in a meaningful way right away, and so I would support what vice president Gable suggests.
Other members? I do know that there is a process involved, whether superintendent president or vice president Gable will go to, working with on this entire process, working with our individuals. So a lot of these numbers are going to be finalized, but at the end of the day, it is anticipated that there's going to be a savings to the homeowners, and that's the important part, and that's the end goal, what we're trying to do. Other members at this time? There is a motion to second on the floor to approve it. Other members at this time?
So how much times is the frequency? Are we seeing a lot of fluctuation in the market that, or is it pretty stable as far as the rates are concerned?
The past two months, the market has been pretty stable, so I'm not really anticipating that it's going to dip down, but you never know what's going to happen.
Right. Well, I'll certainly support this motion and this item. I am curious to see what the net savings per taxpayer would end up being as an informational item or perhaps subsequent to this meeting, but this is fantastic, and I plan on voting yes for this item.
There is a motion to second on the floor. Student trustee, you're going to be able to vote on this one as well. So resolution authorizing issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds. Madam Secretary, I'm sorry, student trustee, your vote, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing more good news about that. 7.2, emergency resolution. This item is going to require an action. Let me very quickly go through in our packet. This is an emergency lighting for Building T at the liberal arts failed, and the overheating setting off the fire alarm system on October 7, 2017. Because of the nature of the problem, I presented rapid action and part of the district to support a safe environment and the continuation of scheduled courses. Therefore, it is an emergency resolution for a public project, item 7.2. Can I entertain a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Trusted by trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Zia, second by trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments on this item on 7.2? Hearing none. Student trustee, your vote on this emergency resolution. Thank you. Madam Secretary, your vote, please.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. 7.3, this is a contract award. This is the item that was laid over. I'm going to...
So moved.
I'm going to, thank you. It is an action item, so motion by trustee Zia, second by trustee Otto for the administrative services action item. Questions, comments on this one? Student trustee, you will be able to vote on this one. Any questions, comments on this item? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on student trustee.
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, item 7.3, contract award.
Jeff Kellogg?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Doug Otto?
Aye.
And Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. Reports, 8.1, academic senate president. How are you down there?
Oh, we're good, but I have good news. I don't have a report, so we can move on.
Hey, ball. 8.2, superintendent president, top that one.
For the first time in over 15 years, all signatures on the ACCJC midterm report.
Fantastic.
Stand together, rise above.
Congratulations.
Great job.
That is, thank you for all parties on that. That is very important. I'm sorry, does that conclude your report?
Yes, I was trying to be fast.
Thank you. That's all right. I do not want to rush you on that. Student trustee, your report, no pressure.
Okay, I will take a good, like, five minutes. Anyways, so this past month, our ASB got to attend the CSOW, or the California Community College Student Affairs Association at San Jose. That was about two weeks ago, and at the conference/convention, it was in a Doubletree in Hilton, and we took four representatives from this school, from our school, and we got to connect and meet other associated student organizations and bodies from other colleges. Some of the schools that attended were Santa Monica College, Pasadena City College, Diablo Valley College, the list goes on and on, and I got to really connect with their student trustees and see what's going on with them. I attended a variety of workshops, one exclusively only for student trustees to discuss the items that we have to take upon throughout our academic year. One of the workshops I attended was a diversity and culture workshop, and we took a personality slash true colors test and to see how we could get along with our boards and how to be effective student trustees ultimately. It was hosted, it was directed by the department, Savannah Andrews, who's a department assistant for Bakersfield College. And then in addition, I attended another workshop, which was on the topic of DACA. DACA students and then what effect we, as community college students, have taken, what effects community college students leaders have taken on addressing that issue. When we brought that up, we also had to bring up the issue, mentioned Dreamers and the AB-540, along with what effects it had on the national, state, and community college level. Some of the speakers that attended, the California Community College Student Affairs Association, where the first speaker was the mayor of San Jose, Sam Licardo. He was the keynote speaker for the dinner on Friday, and he spoke a lot about his city and what he's done, along with what it takes to be an effective leader within your community college. Another speaker was Evan Low. I had the personal privilege of meeting Evan Low, Assemblymember Evan Low, back in 2014 when I attended the summer program at Stanford University, and I got to connect, and I've seen back when he used to be just a regular council member, and now he's an assembly member for District 28. So it was great seeing him. He was a speaker, he was a keynote speaker for the morning on Saturday, and he was really energetic, and it was just a great way to start the morning. As for the final speaker, her name was Esmeralda Montenegro Owens, who's the director of communications, marketing, and public relations at Hartnell College, which is in the city of Salinas, and she was the concluding speaker for the convention. Ultimately, the Associated Student Body of Long Beach City College loved the conference of the convention, and we hadn't been there, we hadn't had representation within about two years, so, you know, hopefully we'll continue to attend that semestral, if not semestral, yearly, and just have representation of Long Beach City College. Aside from that, just some updates on assembly bills that the Student Center for Community Colleges was following. AB 705, these following bills have finally been signed by the governor, and they'll be eventually taking effect. So AB 705, and that one was the one about requiring community college to use high school performance as a factor in determining course placement for college-level math and English. I know for us here in Long Beach, we've had the Long Beach College Promise, and how we connected from LBC, LBUSD Unified, and how we already collected the transcript data, but now this is going to be a state thing, so luckily other community college districts will follow along. AB 1553, which was from Assemblymember Patrick O'Donnell, which makes the California College, the LBCC... College, the LBCC Promise, Promise Pathway, an official program, a permanent program now. And then that works along with the AB 19, which establishes as an official California College Promise program. We're really excited for that, because that will provide a tuition free for first-year community college students for full-time college credential or degree-seeking students. At the moment, to my understanding, the governor still has to assign funds from the budget for the upcoming year. So, I mean, we can have this law passed, but if we don't have, we've been, obviously, we have money donated from the foundation, and we raised a lot of money through that. And I mean, I even saw on the flyer that we got Ralphs helping us, so that was dope. That was cool. So, but yeah, I mean, you know, it's great that we're finally, you know, we're really, really progressive. And I mean, just looking at California as a model, providing for a whole first year of college tuition, I think that's a great way. And I mean, specifically, you know, thankfully, our former Superintendent President Eloy Oakley, who's been great as the Chancellor of State of California. Aside from that, that pretty much concludes my report. Our next Student Senate for California Community College meeting, Region 8 meeting, will be here in Long Beach City College, so we'll be the host. So we'll have about 13 different community colleges coming to our Region 8 meeting. It'll be next Friday at 8:00 in the morning. So we're looking forward to that and hosting that. And with that said, that pretty much concludes my report. Thank you so much. Go Dodgers.
Thank you. Next Friday, as in Friday, a couple days from now, or the following Friday?
Next Friday. So this Friday, we have the meeting greet, and then next Friday, we'll have the Region 8.
Thank you. Board of trustee reports, as my practice, I rotate the members. So this time, I'm going to start with Vice President Zia, followed by trustee Otto, then trustee Malauulu. Vice President Zia?
Thank you, President Kellogg. I know out of respect to your request earlier and the wish of the majority of the board, I all try to be very brief in my trustee comments and pertinent to students. So on October 20th, I had the great pleasure, as our ASB president mentioned, to go to the ASB meeting and meet with the students. I'm so excited and just thrilled to see such wonderful leadership in our ASB student body and the great work that they're up to. Some of the initiatives that I'd like to invite us to collaborate on is internships and supporting our students with internships and making sure that there's a pathway. We get more industry to the table and companies that we know, corporations that we know, or small businesses, and other friends and family and colleagues on the foundation, to invite them to support our students by creating a pathway for internships. Other than that, I am excited about Assembly Bill 19 passing and the free community college. I do like to see, however, a legislative breakdown or analysis of it. It's my understanding that the application of it will only apply to new students and for only 19,000 students. So if it's possible to get a legislative analysis, perhaps in the next board meeting or other meetings, or by way of correspondence to the board, that would be fantastic. Thank you, President Kellogg, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Trustee Otto? Doug, you're off.
Sorry. I wanted just to bring the other trustees' attention, the fact that even though the governor has signed SB 19, there are still questions as to whether the money coming out of SB 19 is going to be ongoing or not. There are those who believe that it will be ongoing. That's the good news. The bad news is it comes out of Proposition 98. And that's a deal with the devil. And so we ought to be watching that very, very closely. I intend, and the only other thing I would say in the interest of time, and even though I do realize that it's the eighth inning now, and the likelihood of much meaningful baseball is not good, during, under Agenda Item 9.1, I've discussed with President Romali and Board President Kellogg, the formation of a student success agenda item ad hoc committee on the part of the board. And every student success effort that I've participated in, from the class programs to involvement at the national level with Save the Dream to many made other programs, say that you need to agendize student success on a regular basis in order to be successful. And what I would like to do after discussions with our leadership and our former Director of Institutional Effectiveness, and one of those participating now, is to come up with a curriculum for the board to learn more about student success and make it a meaningful part of what it is that we do. So I just wanted everybody to know that that's where I'm heading on this on 9.1. And I've talked to trustee Malauulu about being on that ad hoc committee if she'd like, and shared that with other people as well. She has a background in curriculum as a professor here at Long Beach City College. And so I'm hoping that we can come up with something interesting.
And to the response that I will work with Superintendent President to put something more formal, so we can have agendized to work forward on that. So thank you very much. And I'll work with the Superintendent President on working on the details. Trustee Malauulu?
It is the top of the eighth, 3-1, and I'm going to be really, really quick. A lot of, a lot to report, but I'm going to steamroll past it and just give you some highlights. On September 15th, I was a guest on a podcast, which was one of our former journalism students who was awarded her own podcast at Cal State University Dominguez Hills. And it was just a testament to the caliber of students that we are graduating from our associate degree programs that go on to universities. And technically, she's a junior, and she was able to beat out several seniors for the position to have her own podcast. So we're really proud of her. Her name is Angelica Williams, and she was one of my former students, so that makes me very proud. The following week, we had the Board of Governors breakfast. There was also, I represented the college at the Centro Cha 20-year celebration, and I had the opportunity to present two achievement awards to two former LBCC students who are also doing great in the community. That was a really great treat. The next day, I was at the Wake Up Call, a journalism conference for our local high school students. There were more than 200 students in attendance, and it was right here at the LAC campus. And then the following week, I achieved a first, attending a ribbon cutting by a machine, Buildings QQ and RR on the PCC campus. It was a robot who actually cut the ribbon. Not sure if you've seen or heard about that, but it was spectacular. And then a really big thing that happened, again, it's featured in the Superintendent President's report, College Radio Day, which was on the PCC campus for the very first time. It's really nice to have the PCC campus be integrated into our events. Everything has always happened on the LAC campus, so it's really nice to start seeing a shift. The PCC community feels a lot more included. Several Hall of Fame events. I had a meeting with the Pacific Gateway Agency, which happens to be in West Long Beach, and a tour of their facility, and was just astounded to know the services that they provide, both for our students and our community. October 13th through the 15th, I was crazy enough to agree to attend a Metropolitan Water District dam inspection tour. I'll tell you guys about that in person if anybody wants to know, but it was a phenomenal experience to be able to see our water sources and how they get to us, and I have a newfound appreciation for water. And I mean that with all sincerity. And then I attended the State of the Fourth District for LA County event with Supervisor Janice Hahn last week, and as well as some of the events surrounding the Gene Lanza Awards. I had an opportunity to meet with Jorgele. We finally had our trustee trustee meeting, and as well as several of the student events that are happening around campus. I know major declaration day is coming up next week, but we've also had club signups, and we had other rallies on campus. And what I would like to close with is just to have you all save the date. I'm really excited about a community theater project that we're working on with our theater department and our theater club spotlight. It's going to be on November 8th and 9th. It's a very short run. November 8th and 9th will be Wednesday and Thursday during the day, during class time at 11:00 a.m. And the night run, the evening performance, will be on Thursday, November 9th at 7:00 p.m. All three shows will be on the PCC campus. There will be no cost for admission. It will be donation only, and all proceeds will benefit veterans. And it's, we're working on a show to highlight the city of Long Beach and Long Beach City College. And our surprise, I guess I should say actor, we do have a surprise actor, is one of our very own Hall of Fame recipients, Mr. Jim Ostich. And he will be performing in that show, and we've got a lot of special treats, so I would really appreciate if you put that on your calendars and come on out and support the theater students in this really unique community theater program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have nothing for, I have nothing to report out. 8.5 trustee committees, there's nothing to report out on that. Future reports, we actually discussed a little bit, but including those, just highlighted, and it's in our packet, the enrollment management, that is a, and student success scorecard. Those are two of the reports that are future going to be agendized. Obviously, those are the ones I picked because of the importance of the enrollment management. We're next to the item 10, reports from...
Whoa.
I'm sorry, Chair Douglas, trustee Otto?
I think under 9.1, we should, if it's all right, appoint this ad hoc committee that I mentioned. I think that's the appropriate place to do that.
And I'll say the same thing, and it actually is. And I'll just, I'll work with to put on the, on the next, on the next agenda to work out the details and agendize it. You're right, it was on, you're correct, but I knew where your intent was. So I'll work with Superintendent President on agendizing something.
Is there an appointed committee of trustee Malauulu and I to come up with this curriculum?
Simply...
Develop materials to put on the agenda by you and the Superintendent President?
Simply because it's not, it hasn't been, and you're asking for action items, I'd rather put it on the agenda so the board can look at it at that point in time, just to make sure we're clear of...
I'm sorry, when we formed other committees, yeah, we, yeah, we, when trustee Zia and I were on the Election Resolution Committee, that was just formed.
I'm sorry, but the difference is that was an agendized item. It was on our agenda, and I was able to take that and then move that over and say, well, we'll form an ad hoc committee on that particular item. But it wasn't an agendized item. This has not been an agendized item. So just to be clear, so we don't get ourselves in trouble. So we'll refer to it. But that is the intent of having an ad hoc committee that trustee Otto, trustee Malauulu would like to be involved with. And so we'll work out the details and agendize it, if that's appropriate. Next item, reports from bargaining associations. I don't believe anyone, unless you would like to. But if you do, not a problem.
All the more reason.
I guess I won't record it.
Good evening. Again, just want to say thanks to all those that was involved, as far as like in the contract negotiation team, President Romali, what have you, and the board, as far as President Kellogg and the board members, as far as like to get this done. Yes, it was put on the fast track over the last four or five weeks. We had started this back in March, April, or whatever. It's glad to have it ratified. We have a TA, was ratified tonight, as far as about a rank and file next door, just this afternoon. And we just appreciated that it's done. Now we can get classified to process the paperwork and hopefully get the checks out and get somebody paid before winter break, as anticipated. And I'm glad that we got it done this month, instead of having it go over to November and have it being pushed in as far as like having everybody backs up against the wall in order to try to get some compensation done before end of calendar year. So on behalf of AFT and all the classified employees, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Good evening, President Romali, President Kellogg, and members of the board, administrators, few left in the audience, faculty, staff, community members, students. Janay Hahn, LBCCFA President. So you heard from several of my colleagues just before closed session earlier, and just a shout out, we have negotiations this Thursday, and we are hopeful that we are getting close to an agreement at the table. And we would be very excited to have a TA that we can send to faculty and ultimately hopefully bring back to the board soon for your vote and approval. And again, I just want to echo, we're looking for a fair contract. And it'd be really nice to be in a situation where we're not constantly negotiating. I think it's been forever, if ever, that the faculty haven't been at the tables. So looking at a three-year contract is quite encouraging. Nice to have labor peace. And it takes me to my second point. We want to be a partner with the district with regards to enrollment. It's very important. It's in the forefront of my thinking, trying to help our department just be creative in scheduling. And I appreciate the efforts of President Romali on this, as well as the Enrollment Management Slot Group. We've got faculty on that as well, and hopefully we make good progress on that this year. We have a meeting coming on November 1st, I believe it is. The FA Equity Chair, Dele Leidjovi, took the lead on putting together a workshop called On Microaggressions. And so this is open for faculty and staff to attend, and it's co-sponsored by the Faculty and Staff Diversity Committee. You heard some discussion earlier about the topic of faculty and staff diversity. And so, you know, the other issue is, you know, making sure that we do support each other once we are employed here together. And so that's really the purpose of, you know, thinking about what microaggressions are, these slights that happen to people from marginalized groups, and helping us all become aware of that when that does happen, because we all have blind spots. And again, just lastly, just want to conclude that FA wants to be a partner with the district in putting forth our strategic plan implementation. So we look forward to partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments on non-agenda item. Madam Secretary, I have no one wishing to speak at this time. Very good. We actually do have to go back into a closed session. We did not complete all our items. So at this time, I will adjourn or recess the meeting to a second closed session, and then we'll come out for the official adjournment, if you want to hang around. At this time, this meeting is in recess. Good luck. The board is now back in session. There is nothing to report out from our closed session. So with that, without objection, we'll adjourn the meeting to our meeting in, on November 14th here at the LAC campus. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.